All right, good timing though, because I'm going to now calling to order the August 10th Planning Board Meeting. And the Planning Board will, following a vote by the Board, will go into Executive Session to discuss a strategy with respect to ongoing litigation regarding Siamese Development and permitting LLC versus Town of Concord at all. As an open meeting, it may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the town. And that the Planning Board will reconvene in open session at the end of the Executive Session. I believe we're scheduled to do that at seven, we start the first scheduled item at seven o'clock. And with that, if I could ask for a roll call of the Board members present to enter Executive Session to vote affirmatively to do that. So I will start with Kristen.
Yes.
Nathan?
First take a roll call of members present for the regular meeting.
Okay, sorry, thank you. First, I'm going to take a roll call of the members present for the regular meeting. So, Kristen, are you present?
Present.
Nathan?
I'm still present.
Andrew?
Present.
And Linda?
Present.
Okay, now, to return to my motion to enter Executive Session.
I'm here.
Oh, hey Haley, sorry, you're not on the screen.
And I'm here too, Kate.
Haley and Kate, sorry guys, I'm running this meeting just from my laptop, so I don't have my, these applications broken out into different screens. So we've got Kate and Haley present. All right, now we will do the vote to enter Executive Session. I'll start with you, Kate.
Yes.
Thank you. Andrew?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Nathan?
Yes.
And Linda?
Yes.
And I vote yes in favor as well. So, so Planning Board, we will, we will exit this meeting, please, enter the Executive Session link provided separately and.
Sorry to interrupt, you just want to mention that you intend to reconvene.
I did, thank you, I already did.
Thank you, okay, thank you.
Okay.
Sorry if I missed this, Nancy, where is the separate link?
It's in the email from Elizabeth.
Got it, thank you.
Okay, or it may have been from Nancy, but below the agenda. Okay, all right, I will, we'll see you over in the other meeting room shortly.
Thanks, bye.
Okay, and it's now two after the hour, and we've got most of our, our Planning Board that's come over. I'm Burton Flint on the Chair of the Planning Board. We have actually already opened this meeting back at 5:30, went into Executive Session, we are back, but the meeting is open, we're reconvening. Elizabeth, I don't think any further roll call is necessary here, right, since the meeting was already open?
I don't.
I don't think so.
I don't think so.
We didn't close the meeting, we stepped out. Okay, and our first agenda item is a, we're meeting with the West Concord Advisory Committee, which I'm pretty excited about, former member of the WCAC myself. And for people on the Planning Board that are newer to this, WCAC, just in case you weren't aware, I'm sure you all are, is an advisory committee to the Planning Board and, and is the expert in keeping their finger on the pulse of West Concord. And today we are getting to hear from them about the preamble to the, I guess, the, the West Concord Design Guidelines, or if I've misstated that, please correct me. Susan, are you the WCAC Chair?
No, so our Chair is actually Amy Kaiser, and I'm not sure she's going to be able to make it to the beginning part of this meeting, but she might be able to join us a little bit later.
Okay, great. Well, I'm guessing you're gonna take it from, for her. So do you wanna?
Yeah, sure. And I'd love to introduce another one of our committee members, Anne Sussman, who's joining us as well. Anne was on the West Concord Junction Cultural District Committee for three years prior to just recently joining WCAC. So, we're really excited to have her aboard on WCAC, and what I'm going to talk about tonight reflects work that she and I did together with our respective committees during the last six months or so.
Wonderful.
Do you mind if, yeah, do you mind if I share my screen?
Please.
Okay, and I guess I should ask, have you received a copy of the Design Guidelines preamble at this point?
Yes, that was circulated to the Board a couple days ago, I think.
Great, and would you say that folks are somewhat familiar with it, or haven't had a chance to look at it, and just trying to get a sense for?
We haven't had a chance to discuss it. I, I hope people prepared and have read it. I certainly did go through it. And, and I'm familiar with the Design Guidelines from the 2010 process, or whatever that may have been. So.
Great, okay, so let's see, I've hit Share Screen, and, yes, let me go here. All right. Do you all see my slides? It, it should just be a title slide?
Yes, thank you.
Great, okay. So, thanks so much for reviewing our preamble Design Guidelines. I just wanted to give a quick overview for folks on the Planning Board who may not be super familiar with where West Concord Junction actually is. It is an outline of a, a business industrial and commercial district in, in West Concord, and it encompasses a lot of the shops and restaurants in the West Concord Center area that you might be familiar with frequenting. Just to help you orient a little bit on where things are on this map, you see the commuter rail line, kind of like going from, I guess it's, I don't know, east to west, maybe, yeah, so actually west-east, whatever direction that is, depending on how you're traveling on the train. And then you see the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail crossing it. So those are the two green lines in the middle of the screen. And then the rest of the outline, this building G here is the Concord Park Assisted Living. And then H over here is, is, is Brookside Square, which is a new apartment complex that's been developed in the last couple of years. This 13B over here is a new building that we're really excited about, that's being developed by the Brookside Square team. And then the rest of this, if you kind of like travel down on the map, you'll see B over here is the Fowler Library, A is West Concord Beauty and Church. And then we also have the, 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 yeah, we have E over here is the, the New Church of Concord, and D is the Harvey Wheeler Community Center. So, you can see that our, our junction here encompasses a lot of the historic buildings that we know and love in West Concord. So, why did we decide to add to the West Concord Junction Design Guidelines? Well, first of all, we've noticed that the junction is an attractive location for, for the development in the general Concord area. We've seen the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail really come to life over the last couple of years, and it's bringing a lot of, you know, great recreational, recreational opportunities through our town center. And we also know that there's a bridge that eventually will get built over the Assabett River to bring people from the Baker Ave Office Park over into the junction. And we perceive it to be a lively, functional town center where people enjoy arts, theater, music, dining, fencing, you name it, like we seem to have it all. And so, you all might remember that the, the West Concord Design Guidelines were originally written in 2011, which at this point is about 10 years ago. And about five years after those guidelines were written, the junction was designated as a cultural district. And, and this means that we're eligible to apply for grants through the Mass Cultural Council, but we also, you know, have a charge because of that to develop the, the junction as an arts destination and a, and a, an economic development engine for the area. The West Concord Design Guidelines as written back in 2011 are very comprehensive. They are also a bit lengthy at about 84 pages, and while they give really good general guidance to our committee and also developers who, who read them, we felt like they weren't fully articulating the vision that our two committees, plus the residents that join our meetings, and also Mass Cultural Council has for West Concord Junction. So, we felt like we could take, take a stab at, at putting a preamble together that might help someone who's looking to develop, you know, basically a new opportunity in, in West Concord Junction, give them a sense for the contemporary thinking of what we'd like to have in the junction. And, and we want these, these Design Guidelines, the preamble we've written, to emphasize walkability, a unique sense of place, our history, and the craftsmanship that's been basically the legacy of West Concord Junction throughout the years. We want, we want to make sure that we maintain our cultural district status, and that we, we emphasize the unique things about the junction as we further develop the area. So now, I would love to hand it over to Anne to talk for a few minutes about this process we went through with 13B Commonwealth Ave. And Anne, I can switch the slides as you talk, and also talk a little bit about other cultural districts and what we believe we, we would like to do in West Concord Junction.
Okay, well, thank you, that was an excellent, no, beginning, Susan, and introduction. So, thank you very much. So, we have an opportunity here when we became a cultural district. I did have a talk with the head of the Mass Cultural Council, and there was a sense, I mean, it wasn't a law, but there was a sense that we would change the guide, the guidelines to enforce walkability and the sense of the junction. The junction was a place where people worked with their hands, where I'm sitting right now in the mill, the mill was a furniture factory. And, and this idea of, of unique craftsmanship that's, that's from a place is something we want to promote, and you get a sense of that in the way we build. And so the sense of quality wood craftsmanship is something that we really wanted to create, and also this also idea that you're approaching someplace special. It's not Nantucket, it's not, you know, you know, Smith College, Northampton, it's its own unique identity. And that's really what the cultural district has pretty clearly said they want us to do. West Concord is special. And so that's why when we explained this to the developer of 13B, that the initial design, it felt like it could be in Idaho or wherever, it didn't feel like of our place. It didn't have the time-tested New England building traditions. And so they listened to us, believe it or not. We came up with some basic ideas for the, for revamped Design Guidelines, and they followed them, and the building on the right is what they came up with, which we believe will start construction within the next 12 months. Next. And so other cultural districts really enforce, have this sense of enhanced walkability where people, if they're driving by, oh my gosh, I had this experience in Northampton a couple of weeks ago, where, oh my God, I didn't have any, anything to do there, but I have to get out and walk on the street. We want that same thing to happen. There's a unique sense of place in each one of these cultural districts, and that's what we want to develop for, for West Concord, and I think we're on our way to doing it. You can see, these are all cultural districts that essentially we're competing with, and we're going to be as good and as special.
Exactly.
And why don't you keep going, Susan?
Oh, sure, okay. So, again, the preamble is a collaboration between the WCAC and West Concord Junction Cultural District Committee. We actually were quite inspired by the Design Guidelines that the Thoreau Depot Committee, I think there was some consultants working on the Thoreau Depot Design Guidelines. And we, we looked at their draft and thought like, well, we can take some of this, and some of it applies to us and other things we'd like to actually build upon and, and make it our own. So, that was the starting point for our preamble document, and we worked on it together, the two committees, during the early part of 2021, and wrapped up, you know, recently in June or so. And it gives the, both of our committees a way to proactively describe what, what the junction does want in new development, as opposed to what tends to happen is developers will come to us with ideas that maybe aren't perfectly formed, or aren't really along the lines of what we'd prefer. And then we're in the position of having to, you know, respond negatively to those and, and not really have a place where the developer starts, where we're seeing something that's mostly good. And so, that's what we're trying to really influence with this preamble, is put, you know, a stake in the ground and say, this is what the community wants, and this is what we're hungry for. And, and that'll give the developers hopefully a way to not feel frustrated when they're dealing with us, and also feel empowered to, you know, be creative and deliver something that the community will love. So then, just to kind of wrap up a little bit, here's what's next for West Concord Junction. There is a branding exercise that has just wrapped up, and West Concord Junction now has a brand symbol that you see on the, the bottom right of the slide. So we're really excited about that, and there is a, a graphic designer working on creating a map of businesses and landmarks in the junction, and that should be ready, we're hoping, by September, because we are hosting Porch Fest, which is a 100% outdoor activity, kind of like a, a band party spread across the neighborhood with different, different lucky porches hosting a local band to entertain us all with music during the day. So we're excited about that coming up this fall. Another thing we're excited about is the Complete Streets sidewalk and crosswalk improvements are going to be starting, we believe, in the fall of this year, and that will create some sidewalk bump outs and mark some, some crosswalks a little bit more clearly, so that pedestrians can feel safer in the junction. We've got 13B coming up, breaking ground, we're hoping, in winter of, of this year, and that's the building that Anne had talked about, where we went through the process with the developer that was ultimately very successful. And then finally, we're looking forward to the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail Connection to Acton and Beyond opening in summer of 2022. And that is all I have for slides, but we're happy to take questions about the preamble document, or if you'd like me to screen share to go through that document, I, I can do that as part of this as well.
Thank you very much, Susan, I was reaching for my mute button. That was, that was very helpful to go through, both you and, and Anne. Elizabeth, a question for you. So, can you quick touch on how the, how the Design Guidelines are implemented when somebody wants to come and build a project? So, what's the, what is the reason that a developer who might want to do something, it needs to work within these guidelines? And then, could you let us know, is the, does the Planning Board need to provide any input, is, are there any formalities here in terms of adopting this preamble and applying them to the Design Guidelines?
So, as far as how they get integrated into the process, as, as soon as somebody comes to us with, you know, their idea, or, you know, hopefully they come to us very early in the process. We hand them to the, the Design Guidelines and, and tell them, you know, before you, before you do anything, you know, read these, have your architect read these, have everybody on team read these, and move forward in that process. Also, we direct them to go to the West Concord Advisory Committee as often as the committee will have them come and, you know, have that open conversation and bounce things off them, and, and. It, it took 13B a while to get to that point, but ultimately that's where they got. Unfortunately, you know, a lot of, well, quite, quite often, a developer comes in, or applicant comes in, and the application gets filed, and we haven't talked with anybody. You know, case in point is Chase Bank.
Right.
Application was filed, and, and we say, well, before you go to the Planning Board or the Board of Appeals, you need to go to the West Concord Advisory Committee. And, and, and that's where I think the, the position, the West Concord Advisory Committee came from, was that reactive position, they're, you know, reacting to this design. And, and by that point, many developers have already put the, you know, the time and, and the money into a design and don't want to have that collaboration. So, I, I think we try to get that word out as often as we can, and I think that's probably something, a, a different conversation with the West Concord Advisory Committee on how we can, what channels the Planning Division can assist the committee with getting, you know, the word out, whether it's to, you know, just send it a one-page flyer to all the property owners and all the realtors, and, and just, so, hey, you know, if you have somebody coming who's interested, you know, please have them look at this. It just makes things, you know, better for, you know, everybody, and reduces time and expense and money. As far as the process, I do see Marcia Rasmussen is the Director of Planning and Land Management. The conversation we had, I, I don't, there isn't a requirement that there be a public hearing. It would just be a, a vote of the Planning Board to incorporate these into the, incorporate this into the West Concord Design Guidelines.
Okay, and just one quick clarifying question. So, the developers that do need to work with us, it's because the West Concord Business District has, we refer to these in, in the instance if we're granting any special permits, or if there's anybody that's, that's building otherwise, other than by right, these come into play under that scenario, is that correct?
So for any, any project that's going through either the Planning Board or the Board of Appeals, we direct applicants to go through the West Concord Advisory Committee.
Okay, but, but I mean, in terms of saying you need to comply with these, you need, you need to, you know, you need to improve your design. Is that just a dialogue, or is it that we are, can look to a, you know, within a permit granting authority, these as a consideration which they need to meet?
Currently, there isn't a, you, you shall meet these guidelines, or you will be denied. There isn't that level. That is probably something that we could discuss further if there is an opportunity to incorporate that somehow into the zoning bylaw, whether it's a section under the, you know, site plan, you know, criteria, you know, if you're within, you know, this district, you know, you need to comply. That's definitely something that we would have to look into further, because it's, to be in the zoning bylaw, there, there would have to be that, you know, that nexus between, you know, these are just Design Guidelines.
Right.
And not Design Requirements. So, that, that process is something that we'd have to look into a little further.
Okay, and, and Susan or Anne, you said that this was a collaboration between the, the Cultural District Committee, and forgive me for getting that name wrong, and WCAC. One of the things that jumped out at me is, is, I mean, I, I think it's a really informative document, and it, and it, and it seems to touch on a couple of things. Form massing and how the building meets the street, windows, things that are not style, but they're, they're, how the buildings interact with the street, or, or are open to the street. But then there was also a little bit of a style element, this traditional New England, you know, the, the mill building, I think a lot of things that are reflected in that 13B, you know, there, in the historic building that were down, that was down by where, I guess, where Salt Box was, reflected in that. I know, and I currently, we, in turn, you know, everybody has different tastes. Was there a lot of public input provided on that we want to make things conform to the design style that was, when, that was in existence when the village, when the junction area was first built up?
I would say during the course of the discussion that happened about 13B, which has been during my entire tenure on WCAC, and I think even before that, there was a very robust discussion about, you know, how, how modern or not modern should the building occupying that position be? And I feel like we aired it out a lot with the public, and they came to really love the design that became more and more, I guess, classic West Concord looking. So, I feel like we've heard from the public a lot about their, their taste in buildings in West Concord Junction, and they were coming out on the side of making the buildings look more uniform to what's already there. I don't know, Amy and Anne, if you want to add to that at all, feel free.
Well, I think my, my comment would be that the, the cultural district insisted we be called the Junction. And the junction was about like these two trains coming together to transmit products and freight and crafts, and it was about craftsmanship. And the mill, I told you this, where I am sitting right now, actually, they made furniture, and a lot of, we have, you know, about 50 artists right now, still working in the junction. So it's this idea of quality New England traditional construction. You're not going to see this, you know, we're not Concord Center, we're West Concord, we have an ideal about quality craftsmanship. And so that, no, we're not a historic district, but we still appreciate historic style architecture. So even some of our modern buildings, like, um, the building that, why was I blanking my mind?
The, the blinds building, WTI, I think you sent me a picture of that, right?
Yeah, well, WCI, that's been, that's been, it's 17 BeHarold, that was just recently redone, or the building that Three Stones Gallery is in, that is not an old building. It's five years old almost, but it looks like it, it was modeled after a very successful building. We want to do evidence-based design. And we have a story, a New England tradition to celebrate here, and that's what we need to do to maintain our junction status, which I think it's really important we do. I could talk more, but.
Yeah, no, I, I appreciate that. I, I mean, the, the reason I asked the question is because I, and, and I'm, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with the, with the preamble. If it were me, I would say, let's define the form, how the building meets the street, and leave it to creative people to come up with what the building would look like. And I started thinking about that mainly because a former member of the Planning Board is, you know, who is the one, you know, he was a professor of architecture, the one, you know, trained architect on the, on the board at the time. I remember his, his reaction to 13B was, well, I liked it better before, which just, and whether he's right or wrong, right, it goes to different people having different ideas about, you know, what things look like in terms of style. So, but I, I also think that the design that you guys got to at 13B will look incredible, especially across from the, the Concord Outfitters and Three Stones Gallery building, which I think is one of the most successful buildings on the street. I talk too much. Let me ask if any other members of the Board have any comments or feedback, or, or not. And with a goal here, within just a few minutes, will, we will vote yea or nay on, on adopting these guidelines, or the preamble to the guidelines, excuse me. Seeing some shake heads, Nate, Kristen, Linda?
I don't have any comments. I appreciate that they, they put it together, and it's thoughtful work, and that we're kind of continuing to update things and not let them kind of sit, so thank you.
Okay, and to second that, I mean, the, I, what I really like about it, and sometimes this is what you can do with a preamble, right, rather than sort of a code, you can just tell the story. You say this, like, let's sit down, and, and these are the pictures of the things we like, this is the feelings we like, and, and that informality, I think, doesn't probably, is going to short circuit a lot of those conversations that, as you learned on 13B, can take, what, four years, if you don't get to the point a little quicker. Well, if we don't have any further discussion, we might keep this meeting sort of moving along. Well, I see, Amy, you've joined the meeting, was there anything you wanted to weigh in, in as the Chair?
Um, I don't think, I, I think we've covered the ground. I think, you know, Susan and Anne did a nice job responding to your question. I think, you know, in my tenure on the committee, and I didn't do my address, I'm sorry, 294 Commonwealth Avenue, and I'm, I'm current Chair of the committee, there's been a lot of tension between, you know, modern interpretations and, and, um, yeah, so I think what we strove to do was our, I think Susan and Anne did an amazing job, you know, leading the effort to pull together something that was really responsive to the comments we were hearing from, you know, from members of the public who are coming out in large numbers to express a lot of dissatisfaction with the things that they were seeing, you know, even when developers could point to something in the Design Guidelines that inspired what they were showing. So, yeah, so I, I think we're really excited about this product. I think Anne and Susan did an awesome job, and we just really, on behalf of the WCAC, really appreciate the, you know, the time the Planning Board is taking to consider it, and, and we, we appreciate your thoughtfulness and, and time on this.
Well, thank you, thank you. Yeah, thank you very much. Well, I liked it a great deal, I, and I, I am not hearing anything otherwise from any of the rest of the Board. So what I would like to do, if, Elizabeth, correct me if, if this is not what you need, but that we would, are we voting to endorse these Design Guidelines? Or voting to incorporate them, or, excuse me, the preamble, or vote to incorporate them into the Design Guidelines?
I believe you are voting to incorporate the preamble into the West Concord Design Guidelines.
Okay, I'll make that motion. So, I, I'll make a motion that we incorporate the preamble provided to us by the West Concord Advisory Committee into the West Concord Business District Design Guidelines. Did I get that right, Elizabeth? All right, close enough?
Plus, I think it's just the West Concord Design Guidelines, for the business and the village, I believe.
Okay, okay, thank you very much. I'll start, Nathan?
You might need a second, if you do, I'll second.
Thank you, Kristen, I did, yeah. Nathan?
Yeah, I'm a yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes, with thanks for all the work that you've done.
Kate?
Yes, and thank you.
Haley?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
And Burton, I am a yes as well, and thank you again. We, we don't hear enough from, don't interact enough with the West Concord Advisory Committee, but, and, but it's, it's great. But, and, but it's, it's great. I know you guys are doing a lot there, and I think this building, that 13B, I really hope it goes up soon, and it'll look really, really great. So thank you. All right. With that, I believe we will move to our next agenda item. Give me just a second, which is the, to open the hearing for the site plan review of the application of Concord Children's Center under Section 11.8.7 of the zoning bylaw to convert an existing single-family dwelling to a childcare center with reduced parking, construct a 7,063 square foot addition, and make related site improvements. That is the parking lot, subsurface stormwater drainage, and landscaping at 250 Old Bedford Road. The applicant, however, has requested a continuance, and so we will continue without discussion to the August 24th, 2021 meeting. Can I get a motion to make that continuance, and then we'll do a vote to do that? Elizabeth, is that, I, I don't think we had a memo on this, but is that the requirement you need?
Yes, and I'm bringing up the agenda memo.
Oh, did we get one?
It was, yep, it was in the agenda memo, so just give me a second, and.
My apologies, I was going off there.
No, no. And so the applicant has requested the continuance with out discussion, without discussion, they're still working with the Natural Resources Commission, they have a meeting tomorrow night. So it was just, it was just poor timing in which meeting went first and which meeting went second. So the board would continue the public hearing to 7:30 on August 24th. The applicant has also provided the board a grant of a time extension for the board to file its decision with the town clerk. So this would be the motion.
Okay. Would somebody like to make that motion?
I'll make the motion. I move that the board continue the application of Concord Children's Center under Section 11.8.7 of the zoning bylaw, 250 Old Bedford Road, parcel 4220, to 7:30 PM on August 24th, and accept the grant of time extension to August 27th to file the board's decision with the town clerk.
I would, thank you, Nate. Okay, I'll take a, a vote. I'll start with Linda.
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yeah.
Haley?
Yes.
And did I, Nate, did I get you?
Yeah, but it's a yes.
Okay, and I'm a yes, I think that's everybody. All right, so with that, we will, the, the public hearing is continued, and we will continue with the public meeting. And now, Elizabeth, I'm, I'm wishing I did have that agenda memo, but we, I believe the next item was scheduled for an eight o'clock start. Can we start that early? If we have the applicant and, and they're okay with that.
I, it's my understanding that, no, you cannot start a notice public hearing early. That's why we, usually when we do continuances and schedule new things, town staff, we really tried to organize agendas so that this doesn't happen. So at this time, the board can go through its minutes, and its liaison reports, and I'll see if there's something that I can think about to fill your time.
Okay, all right. Thank you. So with that, I think we'll turn to the minutes of July 13th. We, we got two sets of minutes in advance of this meeting. The first for July 13th. I hope everybody had a chance to read those. Did anybody have any comments, edits, changes to request to those minutes?
Yes.
Okay.
On the minutes, page six, under Registry of Deeds and Land Court Signature Authorization.
So for which date?
The 13th.
Oh, thank you.
Sorry. So page six, under Registry of Deeds, the first line, Vice Chair, is a typo. And then on page seven, under General Public Comment, the select board member that you're referring to is Linda Escobedo, not Linda Miller.
Oh.
Much that I, I appreciate the promotion.
Thank you.
Certainly, that's all.
Okay, Elizabeth, did you capture those?
Yeah, Nancy is also on, so yes.
Okay, Nancy, thank you. Anybody else have any other edits you'd like to see? Okay, can I get a motion to approve those minutes as amended by Linda?
I'll move.
All right, thank you, Andrew. I'll second that, and so we'll prove that. Nathan?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yeah.
Linda?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. All right. That takes us to the minutes, I think of, was it of July 20?
27.
27th, thank you. I didn't have any comments or edits to those. Any other, any, any other changes? Or any changes? Okay, that was a, I think that was our short meeting. And so with that, I'll make a motion that we adopt the minutes as drafted for the planning board meeting of July 27th.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Nate. All right, with that, I will, Nate, I'll start with you.
Yes.
Okay, Kristen? Andrew?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. All right, we are now done with the minutes, which I think would take us to liaison, any liaison reports, but given that it's August, we might not have much to report. I know that the, the CPC meeting was, was postponed or canceled. Does anybody else have anything that they wanted to bring up?
I attended the West Concord Advisory Committee meeting, which in sum and total was basically exactly what the presentation was just now. Reviewing 13B and the complete streets, the only other item which was relayed was discontent over maintenance of the commuter parking lot, which prompted a letter to the Public Works, which I guess is responsible for maintenance of the portion of the law which is controlled by the town. But there seems to be some jurisdictional thing going on, so I will update as it unfolds.
That's interesting. You'd, you'd think it would be in pretty good shape, since it hasn't been parked on for the last year, but, or maybe that's an oversimplification.
Based on the photos they had, it's got some significant issues. Way beyond being parked on or not.
I see, okay. Elizabeth, are there any other items we can cover in the next 23 minutes?
So I don't think I can fill 23 minutes, so maybe I'll, I'll fill the next five, and then the board can take a 15-minute break till eight o'clock. But I met with the town's new land manager, Will Holden, and Liz McKinley from Davy Tree, who's been acting as the town's reviewing agent under the tree protection bylaw for the last two years. And we went over the tree preservation rules and regs, and will be presenting to the planning boards, I'm going to say probably in the next meeting or two, revisions to the rules and regulations, which would require a notice of public hearing for the board to adopt any revisions. And so these revisions are based on Liz and Will's experience with the, the implementation side of the protection plans and mitigations. And tomorrow night, the town's consultant for the Assabett River Pedestrian Bridge, and I are going to the Natural Resources Commission for a request for determination so that they can move forward with the soil borings for the bridge. The consultant team has been meeting, and with the architect team that did the conceptual plans, and they're, they're chugging forward and doing what's required for the, the site selection and what will be needed with Mass DOT and coordinating between the two of them. And so this next step is, you know, is basically getting to the next point in the project. So it's, it's moving along, it's, it's slow, but it's, it's definitely moving forward in a positive direction. I'm hopeful in the next couple of months that there will be at least some preliminary plans that, you know, that can be presented to the public, just to make sure we're on the right track. Even though the, the public forums that we held on the conceptual plans, there was a significant consensus on, you know, the type of bridge and style and the location, having it be, you know, more adjacent to the commuter rail. So that's, that's moving forward in a positive direction as well. I'll be meeting with the building commissioner this week to develop a potential list of zoning bylaw amendments, as well as putting forth together the draft of the Throw Business Depot bylaw amendments for the board to, you know, continue its discussion on, you know, if and how to move forward with that public process and the, whether to adopt different amendments for the Throw Depot.
Can I ask a couple of questions? So now that we have a land manager, is that, as a land manager's scope of responsibilities to essentially be the reviewing agent for, and helping developers comply with the tree preservation bylaw?
Yes. So this is basically going to be our transition, our transition year for Will to work with Liz McKinley from Davy Tree. I, I imagine that'll happen to, through the end of the year, and then he'll, he'll take over that role as the reviewing agent.
And, and will that maybe take some of the burden off the build? I, I, I got the impression that, that the building commissioner was sort of tasked with making sure that it was followed for the town, and wasn't super keen about that.
So that never, that never transpired.
Okay, I was wrong.
My staff still takes in the applications, and we still, and coordinate with, you know, Davy Tree and that reviewing side. So now we're coordinating with Will on the reviewing agent side. And he's now basically part of our sign-off process for the tree preservation bylaw. So that will probably be some of the changes that you'll see as far as the rules and regs, is going to be that application process is different. There's been one enforcement order, which the developer ultimately paid additional mitigation fee for, and currently I'm working with Will and Liz McKinley on a performance guarantee issue with some plantings that's been challenging. So there hasn't been much involvement with the building inspections division.
I may have crossed a wire, so my mistake.
In, in, originally, when the bylaw was first adopted, before we, you know, spent the last two and a half years trying to figure out the process, that was an initial significant concern.
Okay, okay. And then on the Assabett Bridge, that is funded, what, through design and permitting? Is that where it stands?
So the town through the community preservation committee, the funds, we received $250,000. I was also successful in getting a Mass Trails grant for $135,000. And that will get us to basically 25% design under Mass DOT requirements, which is basically 75% of the work. So we will need to seek additional funds for, you know, that last, that last bit of design work. I'm not sure what that amount is yet, but it should be less than what we've currently spent. And then, and we've already, with our consultant, we've already started the process through the state for a project notification form to be included on the state's Transportation Improvement Program to receive state and federal funding for the construction aspect of the project.
I'm sorry, did you say we've applied to be part of the tip, or we've actually received notification that we're in the tip?
No, we've applied to be included in, in that, that rolling project development.
Okay. So I think you've, by implication, answered my question, which was the reason for following that Mass DOT planning process is because ultimately we anticipate seeking state or federal funds for the bridge.
Definitely, we, we will need to.
I just know that it adds so much to the process and to the expense, because they'll say they want to be able to drive a truck across it or something, you know.
Well, no, I mean, because of the Mass Trails Grant Program, I mean, the, the state has definitely, you know, gotten, I'm not going to say lenient, but, you know, more focused when it's, you know, purely a pedestrian or bicycle, you know, accommodations, and, you know, working with the fire department. They don't need to drive a truck, you know, across it. They, they have, you know, a smaller, you know, UTV or, you know, that they can, you know, if they had a medical emergency, and, you know. So I feel that part of the project is moving forward in a positive direction. What I'm hopeful is that we'll have the 100% designed, you know, within the next, you know, year and a half. So what that means is, in, in the scope of the Transportation Improvement Program, you know, if this is, you know, a four to, you know, $5 million project, that's a, that's a very small project in the tip world. So we may not get programmed till, you know, four or five years from now on the tip, but because it's a ready-to-go project, when something falls off, we could, we can move up faster. So that's, that's why my goal is to, you know, get to the 100% design completion and permitting.
That's awesome. I know that, that, that would make a lot of people happy. Okay, it is, yes, please, Haley.
Elizabeth, I don't know if this would, you'd be in the know on this or not, but just as far as like new staff's concerned, did we, are we going to get a new director of sustainability?
As, as far as I know, yes.
Oh, so it's like posted and everything?
Oh, I don't, I'm, I'm not involved with that at all. I, I can check into that and.
There wouldn't be any reason we wouldn't, Haley. It sounds like, you know, it was a, I think a position that was voted for and probably budgeted for, just a matter of probably getting to the hosting and hiring. Sure, that's hard.
Yeah, no, like I said, I don't know who, who would be in the know on that, but just while we're talking about new people, I'm curious who knew anything.
All right, with all of that, unless anybody else has any updates, maybe we'll, we'll take Elizabeth's suggestion, and so members of the public that are joining, we've been going since 5:30 already, so we might take just a break, and, and reconvene at eight o'clock when we have our next agenda item. And is, is every, everybody on the board good with that?
That would be great.
All right. I'm just going to mute myself and stay in the meeting, and Elizabeth will, I'll come back in 10 minutes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you for the suggestion on the break. That was like the first time that I went outside today. Very, very sad.
All right, well, it is eight o'clock, and let me just look at, see, we've got Andrew, yeah, well, Andrew's lit up, and Kate's there. All right, we have a quorum. All right, we have four. I presume we'll be joined shortly by our remaining members. All right, we have four, I presume will be tried shortly by our remaining members, but I will get started. Stay on schedule this evening to our 8 o'clock agenda item, which is or to open a public hearing in accordance with the provisions of Mass General Law's Chapter 41, Section 81 T and the Town of Concord subdivision rules and regulations to review the definitive subdivision plan application of Stephen Marsh for a minor modification to allow lot 2A to be added to McCullar Lane, formerly Cuca Road in the existing Hosmer Meadow subdivision parcel 3837. So the the hearing is now open and we I guess give the floor to the applicant.
Good evening, Steve Marsh. I am the applicant. We are proposing a minor modification to access our lot from the definitive subdivision plan that was done and approved by the planning board in February of 2018. We were grandfathered lot and basically all we're requesting is access off the existing now paved road to access our property. And that's it pretty much in a nutshell.
Okay, so you say your grandfathered lot, the existing subdivision plan limited it to four plans so that Elizabeth, help me with the timeline here. That would have replaced the 1913 plan or whichever I found from the olden days. So now we've got a four lot subdivision with a with a restriction expressly in the subdivision plan approval that said no additional lots unless what happened? Can you walk us through that? And so we make sure we're looking at those issues.
So the previous decision limited the subdivision to the access of four lots to be accessed off McCullar Lane and to add a fifth lot, a modification to the subdivision would be required to make sure that emergency vehicle access and the stormwater drainage for the subdivision road were still adequate. So that's what this applicant has done. So typically the applicant runs through a presentation of the plan and explains to the board exactly what it is they're doing.
Yeah, I think that would be very helpful to, Steve.
Sure, I can do that.
That would be very helpful to be able to see.
Okay, so what we've done is, go ahead.
Excuse me, is your question Burton, you know, why didn't, why were five lots originally requested when we approved the subdivision?
Uh, no, I more just, I want to make sure to the degree that there was a restriction put in place by our prior board. That the we had looked at the rationale for that restriction and that we had that we had made sure that any any prerequisites for adding additional lots had been met. And in addition to just us are just reviewing the what's what's been been proposed here. Specifically, so Mr. Marsh, if you wanted to take the screen and present the, I guess, the the plan.
Okay, so what we've done, we we did propose or during the process of the Hosmer Meadow subdivision approval process, we did come in to the planning boards. Look, you know, at some point when we have the adequacy of frontage that's actually on the ground, that we would be coming in to to propose our lot under a minor modification to their subdivision plan. So that that's basically what we've done. Again, we are grandfathered. Now, that's been our position from day one. You know, in the fact that the 1913 plan predated subdivision control laws, which allowed us to once the road was upgraded to to allow us to to access our property, which it now has been done. So that that's we've complied with border health. We have a septic permit now. We've complied with the natural resources. We have an order of conditions. We have a superseding order of conditions through the state as well. And we've pretty much done and checked off all the boxes with regard to what was necessary to file the mount modification. Again, all we're asking for is the access portion. We're not changing anything in the subdivision at all. The fire department and the police department and the public works people have all reviewed the the plans and have acknowledged the fact that, you know, we we are in compliance with regard to everything that they've requested. So.
Okay, walk us through how you've met the the requirements in the existing approval to modify the plan.
Okay, so again, our modification is is just we're accessing the property. We're not changing.
Would you like, would you like me to bring the plan up so that you can?
That'd be great if you could, sure. Yeah, if you could just pull that up just a bit, great. So the shaded area on the plan is really the only portion of the subdivision that we're changing in any way, shape or form. It's just and we're extending it to our driveway.
The shaded area.
Yes, right there.
Okay.
So that's the that's about the only modification that we're doing and for condition two that where you approved or the previous board approved a four lot subdivision.
Okay, so so this is Elizabeth, maybe maybe you can help me with these these questions. This is not, this is a lot that is already existing, this 2A, right?
So this lot is from the 1913 plan is comprised of, I don't, I don't know how many lots. But 2A extends from from this property line down you know, a little bit further. It's not shown on on this plan, but it extends down a little bit further to where what was Cuca Drive.
Yeah, I can picture it.
Turns into, you know, the other part of Cuca Road. So the lot extends. So the lot starts in this corner right here. This is currently being developed as a stormwater detention basin for the subdivision roadway. And the pavement ends right about here currently and the roads down to Binder Course. And the applicant would be basically extending a driveway off this end of the roadway to access the lot. All stormwater drainage for this section of driveway, roof drains. And some, you know, additional runoff in the pavement is going to be directed to a subsurface infiltration system.
Okay, and that I got a question about that, but before get there, the 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 T turnaround where the fire truck squeezes in. Where that's that's further down, isn't it, to the to the to the right? Or where is that? And where's the signage that the the fire department wanted and?
The the fire department would like the signage, you know, appropriately along this section right here.
Okay.
And then I can bring up. So this is that same property line for the lot under discussion. And the lot extends all the way down to this portion of the paper road right of way. Cuca Road is marginally improved to right about here. So this is still all a paper right of way. And the pavement is down to binder course to here. This is where the new driveway comes off right here. This is the T turnaround.
I see, okay.
There's already a requirement for no parking signs placed at the end of this T turnaround. And no parking in this area is already incorporated into the homeowners association documents for these four lots. So the the fire department is looking to have a couple other signs basically right here so that they can still be able to make this swing.
And and is that already reflected in your conditions? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay. All right. And I just want to go back to the original approval of the subdivision. I'm just looking for that in your report because you were hopefully, you had hopefully quoted that, but there was, I believe that that one of the issues was doing additional groundwater analysis, right?
So the for this particular application, a stormwater drainage report was submitted and reviewed by the under engineering division. And the modifications and inclusion of this lot do not have a negative impact on the stormwater drainage system for the roadway subdivision roadway.
Okay, and that's because there's significant amount of storage based upon the amount of impervious surface that's being added.
It's based upon the development of the lot is addressing all of its stormwater that it would be creating on its own lot with that subsurface infiltration system.
Okay, and that I guess the one question I have about that, I was, I saw the note that the groundwater is I think it was 17 inches below the natural surface. So is that subsurface infiltration system, is that in the groundwater or is it is there fill that it's being placed in?
That I can't speak to. That would be for Mr. Marsh's.
Yeah, so yeah, that would be, the engineer can answer that, but if you look, it is above. It's actually under portions of it or under the driveway. So it's raised up.
Okay.
It's it's above the groundwater.
Okay. Do any members of the board have any questions for the applicant?
Burton, I think you and I were starting when this application came by. I don't know, your memory is probably better than mine, but what I what I do recall from the discussions of the original subdivision was how much flooding was happening there. To the homes that were there. So I remember a lot of discussion about that. And I wonder I would, I was assuming that that had bearing on the number of lots that were allowed at the time.
Limiting it to four. Well, I mean, I think it was the applicant that elected to limit to four and it had to do a little bit with the road, the 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 extent of the development of the road, but they're absolutely hanging over was the question about who the the impact that it might have on on water in the area generally. But Elizabeth, what I'm trying to ascertain from having gone back and looking at the prior decision and and your memo is exactly what the what the requirements are that now need to be met, other than the various town departments looking at this as a essentially as a as a law and saying that, you know, that it meets the very the various town department requirements under the subdivision rules or regulations, what is the finding?
So that's incorporated into the my report as well, which I can bring that up. That's helpful.
Well, I've been through it. I guess the question is, what, but I I'm trying to suss out the ration, you know, the the rationale, looking back to the fact that there was a four lot subdivision that was approved. They're now coming today to ask for another one, for another lot. What, whether there were requirements that were not meetable at that time, that there's something has changed that they're meetable now.
If I may, we were not part of the original subdivision. We didn't own that land. We're separate from the from the original developer. We have nothing to do with the the other developer with regard to, they weren't going to develop our property for us. We just happened to be at the end of the street. So they, you know, they were developing only their property. We do have an arrangement with them to allow us to use their road and to, they actually stubbed all the utilities for us too as well. As part of our agreement to give them, we gave them essentially or an easement to use 20,000 square feet of our land to accommodate the stormwater runoff from their project. So in in lieu of, what we did was we basically said, look, you know, we'll give you this land. Provide us with the adequate frontage and stub our utilities to us. So we're in compliance with with the zoning. Even though I would argue against the better judgment of council and probably the many others, that we are a grandfathered lot and we do have the requisite amount of frontage and land area besides going through this process. This has been a lengthy process. I did discuss this with the building inspector as well. Under Mass General Law, that section or chapter 48, section six, we're a grandfathered lot. So but we decided to go through this process because it is a minor modification. And the original road was not built to the standards that that it was designed back in 1913. Obviously, things have changed since then. So and there were a number of waivers that were granted. So technically, we could have built the road to the 1913 standards and then filed an application to for a building permit. But things went a different way with this. The Hosmer Meadow people came in, developed the property that they owned. We made an arrangement with them to to for drainage, providing they give us the adequate frontage that we needed. Again, I only needed 50 feet of frontage and 5,000 square feet in order to comply with the Mass General Law that I just quoted you. But we comply with all of the zoning as of today, as far as the rules and regs for 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 Concord. So we're in 100% compliance with regard to frontage and setbacks and the drainage and things like that. And just just as a side note, we're down gradient from all of the houses. We're probably at the lowest point. From the the houses when you were talking about flooding and things like that. If you were going back, I don't know who was on the board at that particular time that's sitting tonight on the board that was involved in that part of the process, but we're down gradient from all of that. So.
Okay.
I hope that answers your question.
It's a very helpful background. Yes, thank you. So, okay, so so the the you're saying that the 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 road was built by somebody else. It brought access to to a portion of your your frontage.
Correct.
Acting that you can connect the driveway now.
Yes.
You've got an existing lot, right, 2A.
Correct, yes.
Existing lot. And so Elizabeth, really what we're saying is, it seems to me then that, I mean, that almost sounds like an A and R, except for the fact that you've got a subdivision approval that says that McCullar Lane can only be used for four lots. Is that more or less it in a nutshell?
Correct.
Okay. All right, does anybody else on the board have any questions or comments? If not, I would open it to public comment because.
I just had one question regarding the the existing lot and the 1913 plan. So the lot you have is 11 of the 1913 lots that are all combined as one property?
Correct.
Okay. And so you're not arguing that you could actually develop 11 tiny little lots, right?
Yeah, you know, in in theory, we could, but with regard to Wetlands Protection Act, Rivers and Stream and and a number of other regulations that are in place today in Concord, we really probably could have only acquired two lots. But we've given up a portion of our uplands for the drainage for the entire subdivision. About a half an acre, actually. So and we're only asking for one lot. That I personally think we're entitled to, and I agree with you. We could go through the A and R process or you know, just filing for a building permit, but we elected to do it this way in order to be compliant with your regs with regard to subdivision.
So technically speaking, he does not have 11 lots. All of those lots are now under common ownership. And so they are combined for zoning purposes. So e- even if they were all upland.
Oh, true.
You could only, you could, you could only divide them as they meet.
Right, no, you're right.
So let me finish, please, with the board. So but because there is such extensive wetlands, you would not be able to. You would not be able to, um, divide the lots in a manner where each lot had fifty percent upland. So, um, with the area that's been devoted to the stormwater detention basin, um, it leaves. Very limited upland space for the, the entire lot. So at this point, there would be no. Um, ability to further divide this lot into a building lot. There's no further upland available.
Right.
Okay. I, I, I think that answered a big question that was maybe floating around. Um.
I, I do have a question.
Yeah, Kristen.
Um, although the applicant is talking about this being a separate subdivision, the application is a modification to the existing subdivision. Division, is that correct?
It is not a separate, it is, it is not a separate, um, application. It is a modification to the previously approved subdivision.
Thank you.
Elizabeth, are there any other items you want to cover or, or can I o- open it to public comment at this point?
I have no other items other that, um, aren't already included in my report.
Okay. Thank you. So with that, um, uh, I'll ask if anybody from the public would like to speak. If you, you can use the raise hand function and, and we can, uh, can call on you and unmute you. Um, or if you are dialed in, I see we have one dialed in. That is what star Elizabeth, what, how do you, how do you raise your hand if you're on? A phone, remind me.
I want to say it's, uh, star nine. Star nine to raise and star six to lower.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, first one is, um, uh, Kevin Genie. If you can unmute yourself and say your name and, uh, provide your address, please.
Uh, good afternoon. My name's Kevin Genie. I am an attorney. I represent, uh, Kukarode LLC. Who is the developer of the Hosmer Meadow subdivision. Um, my office is located at twenty-one High Street in North Andover, Suite two zero eight B. Um, I just wanted to clarify a couple of things. First of all, uh, I'm not appearing, uh, to oppose. The, uh, development of Lot Two A by Mr. Marsh, but there are a couple of things I would like to clarify. So Kukarode LLC, uh, is not, uh, participating in this, uh, application. Uh, we are not seeking a modification of our subdivision approval. Uh, and I do think that this should be treated as a new definitive subdivision. And I point to the, uh, approval by the board of the Hosmer Meadow subdivision. Uh, where it said, uh, access from the improved roadway shall be limited to four lots, and this is important. Until the planning board grants a definitive subdivision to extend the road and approve stormwater drainage. So, um, again, the development of Mr. Marsh parcel, I think, was contemplated. Uh, at the time of the approval of the Hosmer Meadow subdivision. And at the time. Uh, the board said that there would need to be a new definitive subdivision regarding an extension of then Kukarode, now McCall or Lane. Um, and I think that that's important for another reason. As the board may know. Uh, at the time of the approval of the Hosmer Meadow subdivision, uh. That approval was subject to judicial appeal. It took a number of years and it was of, uh, questionable validity. Nevertheless, it was, uh, the applicants, the petitions were successful in delaying the subdivision development. I, I want to be careful that the extension of McConnell Lane is not treated as a modification. Of the McCall Lane approval that was attained by the Kukarode LLC, because I do not want. Uh, the fact that this road is to be extended, as again, it was contemplated, I believe, when the approval was initially done, is treated in many way. Uh, as a change to that approval that could give rise to an appeal. Uh, because an abutter is seeking to, uh, improve their property and build a lot, which I think Mr. Marsh respect. I think he has, uh, the right to do that. As a result of the improvement of McCall Lane. In order to provide frontage for Lot Four of the Hosmer Meadow subdivision. That resulted in a hundred and seventy-eight linear feet of frontage that, uh, also benefits Mr. Marsh's property. Uh, and again, as Mr. Marsh has already pointed out, um, and I believe that he's submitted, uh, an opinion from the town of Concord. Uh, his lot does meet the minimum requirements for a lot. Uh, so to the extent that he wants to go ahead and improve that lot and add a single residential structure. I, I think he should. But again, Kukarode LLC, the developer of the Hosmer Meadow subdivision is not. A party to this subdivision approval for Mr. Marsh. It's a separate subdivision. And I think it should be treated as such, and I, I think I've made a clear reasons why.
I thank you very much. Yeah, does, would anybody else like to make a public comment? Just give people a few seconds here. Okay, Elizabeth, this matter of first impression for me, so the, obviously, the, um, this is a. A desire to make a modification to a subdivision plan that was made by another proponent or another applicant. And I suppose, is it the case that once a subdivision plan is, is recorded that somebody else who might have an interest can go along? And seek an amendment to that. And is there a way, uh, for, for, um, the original applicant to oppose that?
Um, that's definitely not a question I'm gonna answer on the fly tonight.
Okay. Um, all right. But so far, based upon the information we have in front of us. It is within our authority to modify, make a modification to a subdivision plan based upon. Uh, wh- whomever makes an application to, that has property that's presumably abutting the original subdivision. If they're accessing that road.
That's my understanding, but, um, the board could get clarification from town council.
Okay. Um, and I just, I, I want to. And look back at those again, that, that the requirements from the original approval and, um, Elizabeth. I'm just. I'm flipping through the eight pages here memo. I, I want, I want to. Uh, Mr. Genie had quoted from that, and I want to go back to you on the extension of the road. Uh, language and, and, and just see exactly what the planning board provided for at that time.
For the original decision?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, the prior endorsement. I'm sorry, Kristen, did you, was that Kristen?
Yeah, I think he was quoting, uh, condition two.
And where are you seeing that?
Uh, the one about, uh, right there, access from the improved roadway shall be limited to four lots.
Oh, okay, sorry. I'm, I was looking locally. Okay. Uh, until the planning board grants a definitive subdivision. That's a little ambiguous, a definitive subdivision to extend the road and improve the stormwater drainage. And so I, I think, uh, Mr. Genie is making the point that the road has not necessarily been extended. The driveway is extending off that road. Um, it sounds like there have been stormwater drainage improvements that have been, been signed off on. It seems to me that, um. I, 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 I'm not sure that the planning board at that time, and having been a member of the board, but new to this stuff at that time. Um, was thinking about whether or not the subdivision, the subdivision plan needed to be revisited. Or, um, or whether a wholly entirely new subdivision plan needed to be, um, sought. I, I'm not sure that's material to the discussion because it would appear the applicant is standing to be able to ma- make an amendment to the plan. Uh, and Elizabeth, unless you would buy, unless you tell me otherwise.
Um, it, the. It is my recollection that, no, it was not the intention of however the wording is stated. Uh, that, um, the applicant submit a brand new subdivision for an existing road. With existing right of way laid out in nineteen thirteen, that it would be a new subdivision. And, uh, it's a modification. The applicant's not proposing any modifications to the improved end of the. The end of the improved road right of way. They are just extending driveway pavement off the end. They're not proposing any modifications to the stormwater. Um, they're addressing all of their stormwater on site. And the engineering division has found that the project will not impact the stormwater for the subdivision road. Um, so whether it's a. Question, uh, clarification from town council on the exact wording and whether, uh. A new subdivision is, uh, required and the process to go forward with that, that's a question that, um, I can't answer.
Yeah. And as I recall, I think the concerns were with, with the board at that time, were simply that we do have this somewhat unique situation of having this very old. Um, paper streak that somebody could make an argument that they would build as of right down. Beyond what, beyond the four lots that were in that subdivision plan, and they, the board wanted to make clear. That any further development, we would need to come back before the board i- i- in plain terms.
It, it also has to do with how that lot was to be developed, was, was not known at the time.
Right.
So whether the road, um, the actual pavement had to be, um, you know, the right of way had to be improved. And the pavement extended, um, and, um, you know, so that was also not known.
Yep.
Um, how, uh, like I think I'm just repeating what you guys are just saying. Like, how can one party modify another party's approval? Like, doesn't the approval run to the? It, it, it's tied to the. Property. Is that correct? Like the way it's registered?
It, it's, it's tied to that road right of way layout.
The, the approval is.
And the, and the properties that have frontage on that road right of way layout.
We have certain rights to that.
Monson Road was, was laid out and improved, I don't know, years and years ago. And in the past, I'm gonna say ten years, a developer bought the properties at the end. And, you know, submitted a definitive subdivision application to, to extend that roadway. That was different. That road right of way did not exist. So they had to lay out a new road right of way and then go through the process to extend that pavement.
Okay.
And so that's, that's not the case in this point, but, um, again, I would have to defer to town council.
Thanks.
And, and so what we're getting here, Elizabeth, there, there is that, that, the historic Kuker Lane that, that continues and, and connects to Main Street. Via the, the, uh, you know, it curves around. The, but the, the applicant's not doing anything here that would allow for the extension of the road any further at this time. Or unless, I guess they could make the argument that, um, that that's a, that's a grandfathered in street. Is that? Is that the case?
No, they'd have to go through a, a process. It would be this process and.
Okay.
Um, if they had to improve the road right of way and extend, um, you know, the. Utilities and the base course and the pavement, if it had to, you know, extend down the right of way, that would be part of the process. Which is not being proposed at this point.
So, so, so I'm, I'm, just so I'm clear, part of the concern for two A. Is that absent being included within this permit or this, this, um, definitive subdivision. They would be responsible for building the road out appropriately to the limit of the property, right? Is, is that kind of the problem that the existing road that's there is not improved sufficiently for a subdivision?
The e- the existing road.
The. Road, yeah, or, or that's listed on the, the paper road that's listed on the plan. I, I'm just trying, I'm trying to. I'm, I'm trying to just figure out, uh, understand the, the motivations of, of why this solution. Is better for the, for the two A lot, and it's because it's a simpler process than building out the, the road. To create the frontage that they would need in order to, to build that subdivision. Is that?
That, the roadways already is already create the, the roadway improvements. And the road has already constructed.
Okay.
Across the frontage of this lot. This is the easiest solution because the applicant does not have to do anything. The utilities have already been put in the roadway. The stormwater drainage has already been done for the roadway. The pavement is down the binder course.
Andrew, I think, in fact, one way to think of it is effectively, the applicant just needs permission to connect to the, the, the road that's right there. Bordering the property bec- and, and, and the, the, there is the issue that the, when that road as a thing was built. There were restrictions placed on it. And then one of, the one being that it could only connect to four houses. And now this is a fifth house that's coming along that the road, for whatever reason, I don't recall, that was extended by the original. Uh, the developer of the existing four lots was extended to give frontage to this lot.
Okay, so it's already built and created for this, for a purpose.
To provide it with sufficient frontage. Yeah.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah. So, um, I, I, I trust that the other board members have been through Elizabeth's. Memo and Elizabeth's, uh, finding that, 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 uh, the required findings under the subdivision control law. That, that, that we can make the findings based upon the application. Subject to the various conditions that Elizabeth has included. I believe conditions one through sixteen. Were there any other conditions or comments if, if we were to vote to, uh, adopt the planner's recommendation? And, um, and I guess a- approve the amendment to the subdivision plan. That any other board members would be seeking, or are there any questions about the existing conditions, the, the proposed conditions? While the board's thinking is the applicant, uh, uh, and, and. Mr. Genie, I, I, I get to you in just one second. I just saw your hand. Sorry about that. Um, with the applicant, uh, is, is the applicant on board with the conditions in the planner's report?
Uh, we've reviewed everything and we're one hundred percent, um, we're willing to subscribe to everything that's been recommended.
Okay. Um, Mr. Mr. Genie, thank you for raising your hand. Uh, if you'd like to unmute yourself, you don't need to re-identify where you're from.
Yeah, I just, um, want to clarify just a couple of things, uh, that were raised by some of the questions. So the, the reason that the road, McCall Lane. Was improved along the frontage of the slot two A is simply a result of the, uh, number of lots. And the, uh, configurations of the lots that were owned by Kukarode LLC when they created the Hosmer Road. I'm sorry, the Hosmer Meadow subdivision. Um, one of the lots is essentially across the street from two A. So in extending McCall Lane. Uh, only to service at the time, the properties that were owned by Kukarode LLC. Uh, it simply resulted in frontage that also benefited Lot Two A. The reason that, uh, the Hosmer Meadow subdivision is limited to four lots. In terms of, uh, the property owned by Kukarode LLC is that's the total number of lots that could be accommodated by the property that was, that was owned by that entity. If they had owned more property, they likely would have sought additional lots. Um, but the property that they owned would only support for good building lots, and that's what they sought. Um, and that's all the property that they owned. Um, so the, you know, the suggestion that's made a couple of times that is, you know, the question why. Uh, Kukarode LLC only sought to develop this certain property, this number of lots, is merely because that's the property that they owned. Um, two A is owned by, um, or at least controlled by Mr. Marsh. And again, as he's pointed out and is clear from the plan, his property is, uh, a butt to the paper street. Uh, certain portion of the paper street is improved in front of Lot Two A. And to the extent he wants to extend a driveway at, at the end, we do not have an opposition to that.
Okay.
Uh, what's, what do you mean? He controls the property, but you, you. What's, what do you mean? He controls the property, but you, you said he didn't?
Well, my understanding is it's owned by a trust and I believe that the trustee is on this school. So my understanding is that Mr. Marsh is developing it, but I don't, I don't know. But I don't believe he's a record title owner, but I do think that he has the right to bring, you know, this matter before the Board today to construct a home.
Burton, my concerns are that we're, we're still developing an area that shouldn't be developed. I can appreciate that there is stormwater management there to accommodate, you know, the existing houses that are going in, but I think, you know, we're we're harming, harming the, further harming the environment there. So I just want to make sure that that is on the record.
Kristin, thank you for that. I, I think, yeah, we, we certainly heard a lot of concern and comments about groundwater, seasonal flooding, whether wetlands were jurisdictional or not. There is a lot there. I think, you know, I, I, I am going to look within the four corners of the application and the, and, and the findings of the town departments that, that suggest that they've met the requirements for, for managing stormwater. You know, it's interesting, I presume, this, I mean, this house wouldn't have a, I mean, it's not displacing any groundwater, right? Because it's got to be built essentially above the existing surface. And I am sure, I presume, Mr. Marsh, there's no basement in this house, correct?
No, actually, there is a basement.
There is?
It's, it's actually, the basement floor is actually one foot above the, the existing grade. We went out to do the testing with the engineering department. The groundwater actually was lower than we originally had, like, you know, we're, we're going to use the worst case scenario.
Well, I guess it might, you know, sometimes there's a concern that a basement that is extending into the existing ground displaces area that is otherwise water storage, right? But you're building this all on top of the existing ground, yeah. So, so Kristen, I, I hear that concern, but I, I think that the findings of the, of, of the various town departments is that this will not aggravate that problem. And I, and again, I guess, I think that we, Elizabeth, what we are evaluating this on is the, the criteria in the subdivision control law. Right? As, as opposed to, you know, some other special permit finding or something like that.
Correct.
Okay. Any further questions, comments from the board? Okay, so at this, at this juncture, we have the option of, I mean, we've, we've already got a, a report from Elizabeth with a recommendation with the list of conditions. Didn't hear any feedback on, on modifying any of those. Would anybody like to make a motion to adopt the rec, the town planner recommendation? And in a approving the application?
I'll make that motion to adopt the recommendations that's listed in the town planner's memo as presented.
Okay, Elizabeth, do you need us to follow the formality there?
Yes, the motion would include a vote to let the Board grant the the modification, and I can bring up modification to the Hasbro Meadow definitive subdivision plan pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 41, Section 81, and the Planning Board's subdivision rules and regulations based on the findings and conditions of recommended conditions of approval as outlined in the town planners' report. And, and Andrew, you could, you can just say, that's, that's my motion. We'll make sure it's reflected in the minutes.
Yes.
Okay.
The motion I'd like to make.
I'll second that. Thank you, Nathan. All right, with a motion made and seconded, Kristen.
I abstain.
You abstain, okay, thank you. Andrew?
Yes.
Nathan?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, so that is approved with, by a majority. Okay, I believe then.
That's it for your agenda.
That's it for our agenda, and we finished at 8:46. It's pretty good. All right. Thank you. With that, I will.
Burton, before you, the Board needs to decide about your August 24th meeting.
Decide as to whether it will be in person or remote?
Uh, yes.
Um, I think, given the current mask guidance or quasi-re requirements that we should do it remotely. Is my view, but it is anybody else on that? I'm, trust me, for, for people that want to meet in person, I'm quite keen to meet in person, but I'm sensitive to the fact that I wouldn't otherwise go sit in a crowded room with a lot of you right now. So, I mean, does anybody have a problem with that on the board?
No, things don't look good sadly, I agree.
Yeah, that's a pretty prudent move, I think.
Okay. All right, so that's it. We will be remote.
Thank you very much.
Quite a meeting, so everybody do your homework. And I will see you virtually then. Have a good night.
Thanks. Bye.
Night, everybody.